Greetings. My name is Tina Surstead. I'm proud to be a part of League of Women Voters Dakota County. Welcome to the ISD Special Election Candidate Forum. It is my privilege to introduce our moderator, Lynn Lewis. Lynn is a trained moderator, an active member of our league, and now serving as a co-president and co-voter service committee chair. Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening, and welcome to the ISD 196 School Board Special Election Candidate Forum hosted by the League of Women Voters Dakota County. We appreciate the candidates for joining us tonight. A special thanks to the City of Rosemont for providing the venue and to Apple Valley Community TV for recording and broadcasting this event to residents across the district. We also acknowledge the other community TV stations in Dakota County that will be rebroadcasting the forum. We will also share the recording on League of Women Voters' social media platforms, and we will provide it to the school district. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with 114-year history and is committed to empowering voters through education, engagement, and civic participation. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. LWV Dakota County aims to deliver unbiased information to Minnesota voters irrespective of their political affiliations. This forum is a public service designed to offer you a chance to hear directly from the candidates about important issues. Please note that the views expressed here are those of the candidates and not those of the league. Our sponsorship of this forum does not constitute any endorsement of any candidate. We provide complete unedited recordings of our forums. Editing is permitted only for official media purposes, and any excerpts or edited clips must not be used for partisan or political purposes. Tonight, there are two candidates competing for one open seat on the ISD 196 School Board. This is a special election prompted by the election of a former board member to the state legislature. We will begin with opening statements given in alphabetical order. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Closing statements will follow in reverse alphabetical order, with each candidate again having two minutes. The order of answering questions will alternate between the candidates, with each having 90 seconds to respond. Our timekeeper will signal with a yellow card when 15 seconds remain and a stop sign when it's time to wrap up, so we can move on to the next candidate. Many of the questions for this forum were submitted electronically to the league and reviewed by our members for clarity. Additionally, some questions were created based on topics of interest identified in the community. Due to time constraints, we'll not be able to address every question submitted. The forum will conclude in 45 minutes to an hour. So let's begin with opening statements. The order for opening statements will be Melissa Field followed by Leah Gardner. Melissa?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Field, and I'm running to be your next 196 School Board Member. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to have the opportunity to participate in this forum. I'm a 20-year resident of Lakeville and of ISD 196. My husband Joel and I have raised two sons who have graduated from the district, both attended Apple Valley High School. I'm a retired police officer with 20 years of experience, and I'm excited to continue my service to our community as the next School Board Member. I have a vast range of experience on local and state-level nonprofit boards, in leadership positions during my career in law enforcement, and I've had the opportunity to teach young adults aged 14 to 21 leadership skills, responsibility, and good stewardship in their communities throughout the state as an Explorer Advisor with the Boy Scouts. I currently work for the Minnesota Senate, where I have the honor of being involved in and learning how legislation affects our everyday lives, sometimes for better and worse. I sincerely believe my life and job experiences have uniquely helped to prepare me for this next chapter in my life and to be a tremendous asset to the students, staff, and residents of the district. I'm excited to get to work as your next board member, so we can focus on rekindling the parent-teacher bond and taxpayer trust through full district transparency, prioritizing on-grade education, ensuring safety for all students and staff, and exercising thoughtful fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Leah?
Hi. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us for this important discussion. I'm a parent in the district and an involved community member. In the past six months, I have had the privilege of serving on the School Board, and I have learned so much and have become even more passionate about what I hope to achieve in this role. When we talk about our mission to educate, develop, and inspire our students for lifelong success, it's imperative that we mean all students. We need to lean into making sure that every student has what they need to be successful. That's why I led the charge in the Hunger Free Schools Coalition and secured free breakfast and lunch for all students in Minnesota. That's why we must ensure that our schools are safe and welcoming environment for BIPOC and LGBTQ-plus students. That's why I'm committed to supporting better communication, so our special ed families and differently-abled students are getting the supports they need to be successful. When we look at our test scores and graduation rates, we can choose to be satisfied that we're consistently above state averages, or we can hold ourselves to a higher standard. We can dig into the data with an eye to where there are gaps and what are the tools and best practices that can help us move the needle. Thanks to our dedicated staff and administration, I believe that we can do all of this while continuing to challenge all students to meet their full potential through our gifted and talented programs, advanced classes, exposure to vocational settings, and a wide range of enrichment opportunities, including arts and athletics. Long story short, I am committed to finding new avenues for consulting with parents, youth, and staff to grow my understanding of what's needed and to continue to do what I do best, which is advocate for others.
Thank you, candidates. Now we'll proceed to questions. The response order for the first question will be Leah Gardner followed by Melissa Field. So our first question is, what are two or three strengths of which this district can be proud? Leah?
It's hard to narrow down to two or three. We are a wonderful district, and we have much to be proud of. But I do think that especially relevant to the job of a School Board Member is our fiscal responsibility and transparency, which we have received recognition for. We have a stable budget. We have strong understanding of where our resources are going and how that may need to evolve as the population and our student body evolves. We also have, as a larger district, a privilege of having many different opportunities for students, whether that's athletics, arts, other enrichment activities. There's always going to be something to engage and help a student be excited about their schools. And lastly, I have to say the dedication and commitment of our talented staff. We have an amazing staff of almost 4,000 in this district, working hard every day to make sure that we meet our mission to educate our students.
Melissa?
I would like to highlight the academics that the district offers. As a parent of a student who was offered challenging coursework when he couldn't sit still in class, we learned that it's because he wasn't being challenged enough. And that's where having our schools be STEM schools in the district, I think, really benefited my son and all of the students that he had classes with. I know that when I went to school, and there's many schools throughout the state, districts throughout the state that don't offer those opportunities for kids to not only have what they need to lift them up to where they need to be to be successful, but to have all of those extras like we do in our district. I would also like to say the programming that we have for enrichment, the band program especially, is fantastic. I know that there's many parents that have had a fantastic experience with the band program, as well as debate and other enrichment activities. I know that there are a lot of districts out there that are envious and would be very grateful for the opportunities that our students have.
And the response order for our next question will be Melissa followed by Leah. And the second question is, as a School Board Member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms?
So I think that being...communication is key. I know that there are currently a lot of...there's a lot of parents out there that think that some of the classes that are being taught aren't, I guess, appropriate, you could say, for their families. That's something that needs to be discussed with the School Board, or the School Board needs to discuss that with the families, because that's who we represent. There's mandatory learning that needs to take place, but there's also learning that is considered as enrichment. And some of those enrichment classes, you know, parents know their children, where they are academically, emotionally, how they're able to process that information, and teachers need to be able to have that opportunity as well to weigh in on that. So having an open line of communication between the teachers and the parents is paramount to decide where to meet our kids and lift them up from there.
Leah?
I too want to echo that I think a key to ensuring that we are meeting the mark in this comes down to communication. I will say that I think there has been some misinformation and some need for us as School Board Members to clarify fact versus myth in terms of what is being taught in our classrooms. So I would say that, you know, we are an open door to those questions. It's valid for parents to be asking questions and to have transparency in what is being taught to their students. So we want to make sure that we're clearing up any misinformation about what's going on in our classrooms and what is being taught. I also want to say that, you know, it's important, and we respect that parents can opt in or out of certain curriculums, so that's something that's already a policy in place, but something that we can remind folks of as needed. When it comes to, though, what is included, I also think it's important to take into consideration feedback to make sure that our students are seeing themselves in the curriculum. So that's something, whether it's, you know, as a woman, as a person of color, we need to make sure that we're lifting up the full, accurate representation of our history so that we can all see ourselves as future leaders when we're in school. But all things said, I would say, communication.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Leah followed by Melissa. And our next question is, as a School Board Member, you play a crucial role in shaping the educational environment for students. One contentious issue that has recently come is banning or restricting certain books from school libraries or curriculum. How do you believe the School Board should approach challenges related to the selection of books in schools? Leah?
One important thing to acknowledge is that we now do have a state law, so that we aren't taking time debating banning books. That isn't something that is legal anymore. So that's...while that's not in place, I still think it's important to acknowledge the role of our media specialists in picking a vast array of materials for our students to be able to learn from and, again, to see themselves in. So bottom line, I don't support book banning. It's sort of a non-issue at this point in terms of our schools here in Minnesota. But I think that really we do want to have open dialogue again and to make sure that there aren't myths about what is or isn't in any materials available to children and have that feedback and ongoing conversation. But I do think it's important that we expose students to a variety of materials and then let parents decide for their own individual child what they may or may not wish their own child to be exposed to, but not make that limitation for all.
Melissa?
In a democracy, we do not take away freedom to read because we don't agree with the content of the message. However, we make an effort to filter content to our children through analyzing appropriateness for their age and ability to understand the content. Also, sometimes the decision to share the content should simply be the parent's discretion. The responsibility of the School Board is to work with administrators to ensure the media specialists are choosing books that enrich the core curriculum, encourages thoughtful thinking in a manner that's appropriate for all students within the age group of the children attending the school. Book choices should always be available for parent review and open for meaningful discussion if needed. I think that as somebody who is oriented toward problem-solving, I think that there's a way that everybody can get on the same page to overcome the differences in viewpoints over what books should be available. I do know that there's a program that is either in development or has been developed that allows schools to be able to...parents to be able to put, like, a permission list of what books can and can't be checked out. I think maybe that could be a solution, just to name one, of how we can work with parents having that decision of what books should be available in schools, still offering that to kids with parents that think that those schools should...or books should be available.
Thanks, candidates. The response order for our next question will be Melissa followed by Leah. And our next question is, each time a tragic shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support be taken by the School Board to increase safety in our schools? Melissa?
So there are two main aspects I'd like to focus on as a School Board Member to make ISD 196 the safest school in the state, the safest school district in the state. And I would do that by addressing through physical safety, such as a security system, and through emphasizing behavioral expectations. Currently, ISD 196 uses a push-button entry system as a security measure. Unfortunately, so did the elementary school in Uvalde, Texas. We cannot let the mentality of "that will never happen here" bear a mantra. I say this not as a scare tactic, but as a way to say we need to learn from others' mistakes, because the consequences can be permanent. One of our neighboring districts has taken the initiative to fortify every single one of their schools in their district. There's no reason why this shouldn't be a priority for 196. We also need to address the expectation and culture of school. While recent legislation was passed to have a process to consider before dismissing a student from class, we have inadvertently stripped teachers of their authority in front of the kids to make important leadership decisions that affect the learning pattern and atmosphere of school. I believe we need to give the authority back to teachers to decide how their classroom will be ran and allow them to run it. Student discipline should be applied consistently and equally when warranted and support teachers who are respected by their students for being firm but fair. Structure, accountability, consistency, and discipline will benefit everyone in the long run. A safe school should be guaranteed for all.
Leah?
I want to thank you for this important question that I was hoping would come up. As a parent, I want to say that I understand the heartache that comes with the news that we had today. You know, after one day of feeling the joy and excitement of sending my fifth grader to school, now, like all parents, I had to give him an extra hug when he came home. From the perspective of a district leader, I appreciate that I had a chance to talk to our superintendent today, and I want to say to everyone on behalf of the district that safety is the utmost priority in District 196 today and every day. I can assure you that we have been working hard to put the systems and plans in place to keep students safe. Thanks to the voters, we had a bond in 2015-16 and were able to make sure that we had safe and secure entries in every school. In 1819, we were able to bring on a safety and security coordinator, and that helped us to put plans in place, drills in place, and down to the finest detail, make sure that everyone knows what to do in certain situations. And last, but certainly not least, we have strong and positive and proactive relationships with law enforcement. But as a parent and a community member, I also want to say that schools cannot do this alone. We all need to push for more action on this, and that includes mental health resources and sensible gun laws.
Thank you. The response order for the next question will be Leah, excuse me, followed by Melissa. And our next question is, how would you like to see mental health funding allocated locally? Leah?
Thank you. I do think the topic of mental health and the wellbeing of students is essential. It's something that I have been talking with teachers and staff about, and, you know, I think what I hear consistently is that we don't have enough supports. This is more than a school issue. This is, you know, a community and a societal issue where we don't have enough mental health professionals, period. That's impacting our school district. That's impacting many in terms of, even if you have the resources to bring on, you know, a social worker or somebody in each building, there aren't enough out there to be hired. So it's something that is bigger than 196, but it's something that we are invested in and want to continue to invest in, because we have seen the need increase tremendously. And while we do have a good number of mental health supports in our schools, the demand, I believe, does exceed what we have available. And I'm afraid, if we asked students directly, which I want to do as much as possible, that many more of them would self-select into having more mental health supports if given the opportunity and if we weren't having to triage those scenarios.
Melissa?
Well, I'm not going to stray very far off from what Leah had mentioned. I think mental health is a real problem, and it has been for quite some time. As a former police officer, working and answering calls from parents and responding to districts...the school district to take reports of student behavior and what have you, it was obvious to me that about the time that cell phones and, you know, internet use, unsupervised internet use in classrooms, and then using it at home as a filler time for parents, I personally, and so did a lot of my colleagues, saw an increase in behavioral issues with students. I'm not saying that's the only reason. I'm saying it is a contributing factor, though. I think there's a lot of people out there who would agree to that. And recent legislation was also passed to address cellphone use in schools. So it has been...it has been, you know, brought to light, and it is being acted on. I do agree that we need to have more mental health professionals available. I do know that Dakota County has great resources. It's a matter of teachers having the ability to take that hat off of teaching time and putting on the social worker hat, and it's a lot to ask of our teachers. That's where a lot of...so having that support there for our school staff will be paramount.
Thank you. The order for the next question is Melissa followed by Leah. And our next question is, what are a School Board Member's roles and responsibilities? How does this differ from the roles or responsibilities of the superintendent or the administration? Melissa?
So it's laid out in state statute what the School Board responsibility is, and anybody can go to our Revisor website, State Revisor website, and look up that information. How I would see my role as your School Board Member would be that liaison from the voters to our...and the voters and students to our legislators. School Board, whether anybody wants to admit it or not, is a political position. I would like to hope that it stays as nonpartisan as possible. But we need, as a School Board, we need to have people who advocate for what the district needs itself. It shouldn't be anybody else's agenda other than what the students require to be successful and how we can help staff successfully make sure that the students are achieving that. That's our goal. The superintendent manages it, and then we make sure that the superintendent understands what the goal is, either by what we've asked of legislators and legislators have passed into law, or what they're being told, the teachers are being told is needed by the teacher or the superintendent is being told by the teachers.
Leah?
So I think of the role of School Board as having a few key components. One is the supervision, hiring and firing of our superintendent, which is an exciting area for us right now. We just hired a new superintendent, and so we're in the process of onboarding and together setting the direction under new leadership. We have an important responsibility to manage the fiscal budget, and that's something that, again, budgets reflect priorities. So at the end of the day, both of those two, I think, come down to what is the strategic direction that we're taking as a district. And that is something that is critical, that we are a representation of parents, of, you know, the community at large, of youth, and a variety of stakeholders, being able to get their input in to help set that strategic direction, and then make sure that it's actually, you know, not just on a piece of paper, but that we're seeing that strategic direction in day-to-day decisions and implementation. So that's all something that, I think, is our role. And I will say would benefit from more parent and also youth engagement, so that we can make sure we're doing what we aspire to do.
Thank you. The response order for the next question will be Leah followed by Melissa. And our next question is, what differentiates you from the other candidate or from other board members? Leah?
So one thing that I want to say is that I am not coming into this, did not get involved in this, based on any political agenda. I am doing this work because I'm deeply committed to serving the community, which is evidenced by also my day job, working in hunger relief and in the nonprofit sector for my entire career. But it's also more than that. I have been involved in the 196 Foundation, and that is, again, making sure that students have access to things like books and enrichment activities like band instruments. So I've been involved for a long time in wanting to make sure that everyone has a chance to thrive in our community. But again, I think it's beyond that, what I bring to the table. In all of my work, I'm very committed to partnerships, and I think I've evidenced that in any role that I've played. I'm willing to listen. I know how to listen actively and engage community, and I want to build partnerships across difference. I could not do my work if I looked at everything through a political lens. I don't. I want to hear and support everyone in our community. And lastly, I am trained as a Voices for Racial Justice apprentice in equity, not just in verbiage, but also in action.
I would say that my experience in law enforcement, 20 years working for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and for the City of Lakeville, has really given me the opportunity to learn and experience... and experience humanity in ways that many people, like teachers, nurses, people who are in public service, really get to experience. It's not something, other than my two-year degree that I have in law enforcement, it's not something that you can learn in a school or in a textbook. It's something that you learn simply through your day-to-day interactions with people. You learn where people are from and how they behave when they're at their lowest and at their highest points in their life. And that's something that I think really does differentiate me from a lot of, from our current school board members. I don't believe anybody has that experience that they've brought to light, that I've heard or witnessed. I would also like to say with the various other volunteer, you know, boards that I've been on, my volunteer experience, working with youth programs, it really puts me in a position to understand where a lot of residents and students and teachers are coming from, and what their expectations are.
Thank you. The response order for our next question, Kobe, Melissa, followed by Leah. And our next question is, what are your top three financial priorities for the district, and why?
Would you like me to answer that one, or would you like me to answer?
Talk about budgets and priorities.
Sure. Well, I think the biggest aspect of what we're staring at right now is the historical bond referendum that was passed. And while I understand that everything is allotted, a line item for what has been outlined to be done, I think that when you have a living, breathing budget and project, you have to be on top of it constantly. I know it's comparing something small, but, you know, just doing a kitchen renovation, you constantly have to reevaluate your budget. So I think that's going to be our number-one priority. I would also like to take a look at what we're, like, really get down to what the budget is for wages across the board. We cannot have a successful school district unless we have teachers who feel that they are being recognized for the work that they're doing, and that starts with making sure that they feel comfortable with the wages that they're making to support their families. So I would like to say that those are two of my priorities right now, if I were to become your next school board member.
Leah?
So as I mentioned, we have long prided ourselves in being transparent and fiscally responsible with our budget. That's something that we do take seriously and need to continue to have a high priority around. And, you know, as stated, we have a very large, a very large bond that is going into us building some new facilities that were much needed across the district as we've been growing and evolving in our population. It is a big priority to make sure that those dollars are well-spent, that we're with this unique and not frequent opportunity that we're looking at what are the buildings that are going to meet the need today, but as we continue to grow. So right now, we're very limited in our space for early childhood interventions. So we're baking that in, if you will, to how we're building current facilities. So that's going to be important, that we think about, you know, we're not just thinking about the population today, we're thinking about the population 10 years from now. And I also want to say that it's important to have, if we want to be able to attract the most talented staff and not have shortages, we do need to be compensating people well, and that's everything from our teachers to, you know, food service workers, PRA's, all of that. So make sure, making sure we have funding for our staff is also essential.
And the response order for our next question will be Leah, followed by Melissa. What role does equity and diversity play in public schools? Describe how you'd provide a quality education for a diverse student population. Leah?
So we are lucky to be in not only a large district, but an increasingly diverse district. This is why people come to 196 and choose to have their kids in our schools, is because not just of the great opportunities that we offer, but the diversity in the student body, which is growing. And I think it's important to recognize with that comes a change in the overall culture and how we need to respond to student needs. So it is important that we have in our strategic planning and act on making sure that we're achieving our goals around equity. Diversity is happening, at the student level at least. It should be reflected in our staff and our teachers as well, and then that value needs to translate into everything that we do. And that is not just racial equity, but, you know, making sure that our facilities are accessible to people with disabilities, making sure that we have the special education supports for students. And I have to say, lastly, we have a lot of people struggling in this community when it comes to food insecurity and just in general, and struggling to make ends meet. We need to make sure that those students are not facing additional barriers to education.
Melissa?
Well, I do, I do agree that we have a very diverse district, and I think that's a great thing to have because it gives our kids the opportunity to understand where other people are coming from. It gives them the opportunity to understand that families come from different life experiences, and we learn from each other through communication. We can do that through providing, you know, books that offer different life experiences based on culture, religion, ethnicity, all of that. And I think our teachers do a great job of doing that, and I think the state of Minnesota does that. I continuously go back to when I went to school, and I can tell you that after having a lot of discussions with some of my old classmates, I don't think there was any doubt in our mind at any point in time that any one of us was any different than the students sitting next, sitting next to us. And while it's important to recognize where people come from and the different life experiences that they have, I think that's what makes us best at being human, is understanding that it doesn't matter other than what your experiences are. That makes you human. Thank you.
Thank you. Response order for our next question will be Melissa, followed by Leah. What is the, what skills or experiences do you possess that qualify you to serve as a board member? Leah?
Sorry.
And Melissa?
I'm sorry. I thought this was the same question that we had already, but it's different. All right. Well, like I said before, I have the experience with being a police officer for 20 years that has given me those unique experiences of dealing with people from every socioeconomic background, mental health issues, you know, being able to confront and be confronted when there's an issue in leadership positions, where it's been my responsibility of making hard decisions and, you know, making sure that there's disciplines, but that there's also rewards for fantastic behavior or productivity. I've been in, you know, all the way from starting at the very bottom to being in charge of a 120-person volunteer unit, which is not easy to get 120 volunteers to do something all at the same time and be on the same page. Just those experiences in general have really given me, you know, exceptional and unique opportunities to be able to be an asset for our school board.
Leah?
So I think that it's really important to be able to think about navigating strategic plans and systems change. That's a key role of ours on the school board, and something that I, you know, have been very involved in as a part of the leadership team for my organization, other nonprofit organizations, you know, really, the hunger relief system as a whole is rather complex and has evolved quite a bit in the last several years. And so I do think that I have the ability and experience to navigate making sure that we're meeting our objectives as a school district when we set out our strategic plan. I also think that we're in a pivotal moment where our district is becoming more diverse, and, you know, we're coming out of some really tough years, and we need to see our graduation rate, our achievement stats go up for all, but most importantly, we need to take a hard look at some serious gaps that we have there, and that's also something that I work on and have training on every day, and have had, have invested in significant training on. So I will try to bring my own unique lens from my day work into making sure that all students are meeting their full potential in the district.
Thank you. And the response order for our next question will be Leah, followed by Melissa. How can a school board with differing opinions on major topics work together to achieve common goals for the district? Leah?
One thing that I will say about our school board and our district leadership is that we start from a place of respect and communication, even if we disagree. We can voice our differing opinions. In fact, I think that that's important, and something that we're working on, you know, as we're adapting to new leadership and transitions of some of us being newer board members, some of us being there for decades, we're working to make sure that we're comfortable speaking up and sharing our unique vantage points, not just in the board meetings, which, you know, have tight and strict agendas, but that we're workshopping when we need to, that we're talking with, you know, different staff in different leadership roles across the district, so that we're constantly learning and bouncing things off of each other. That's something that we need to continue to do, and I think the most important thing is I've tried to take every opportunity when I'm hearing from constituents, which I welcome anyone to reach out to me anytime, you know, when questions come up, oftentimes, one of my colleagues may have the answers, but sometimes, you know, it's a degree to which we're placing emphasis on one thing versus another. Those are important conversations for us to be having, again, from a place of respect, even if we don't have the same opinion.
Melissa?
I think that's important to understand, again, that everybody comes from different life experiences, different job experiences, and we all have our own opinions about how we think things should be run, but we have to have respect for each other and for those experiences that each other has. I think also it's important to remember that even if somebody does have a varying opinion from yours, I think the people that are on our school board are there because they have one goal in mind, and that's to make sure that our kids succeed. And while we might have a different route of getting there, that is the goal, and I respect anybody who has taken the time and is volunteering their time, sacrificing their family time to serve others' families. And I think if you keep that in mind and have that goal, that goal in sight, that's what compromise is all about, and we need to make sure that we're doing it for the sake of our kids.
Thank you. And now we've arrived at our final question, and the order will be Melissa, followed by Leah. And our final question is, if you're elected, what would you hope would be key accomplishments of the board during your years of service? Melissa?
I would like to see the school board known to be fiscally responsible across the board, that taxpayers and teachers really see that the school board is taking the finances seriously. I know that there are a lot of districts out there that are struggling to make sure that their day-to-day bills get paid appropriately, either if that's making sure that there's extra or essential funding for programming, or just simply that their teachers are getting paid appropriate wages. We also need to make sure that our students continue to excel. While this year's state test scores did improve in the district, and we are above state average, I would like to see that continue. There's no reason why we should stay stagnant or decline. And then also, I would really like to see an improvement in the safety of our schools, bringing back that school culture and really helping teachers and staff to make sure that they're in control of the school, what's being taught, and responsible for the outcome of our students.
Leah?
I have a long list, so I'll get in as many as I can, but I want to make sure that we find new avenues for student and family engagement. That could look like students being on the school board, that could look like different ways that we engage with families. If listening sessions get canceled because people don't show up, we've got to figure out a different way to make there be accessible spaces for parents to come and talk with us. We need a nurturing school environment for everyone. That includes mental health supports, that includes support staff, that includes making sure that everyone feels safe and welcome in our schools. I feel I'm uniquely positioned to make sure that we remove any and all economic barriers from our students. And I want to say that, you know, when it comes to taking a close look at our data points, such as our graduation rate, yes, we have intolerable gaps when it comes to BIPOC students, English learners, and even a higher driver of whether or not you graduate is your family's income level. So these things are important, and we need to make sure that we're not leaving any students out, and that when we say we want to continue to make progress and have opportunities for everyone to succeed, that we're actually following that data into practices that get us results. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to closing statements. Candidates will each have two minutes, and the response order will be Leah, followed by Melissa.
So in closing, I do want to say again thank you to So in closing, I do want to say again thank you to our hosts and to everyone for tuning in. I think this is a really important discussion, and I hope you've learned a little bit more about me. I hope you feel comfortable reaching out to me anytime as your current and committed school board member. As I already just rattled off, I have a lot of priorities for the district and more than I was able to achieve in six months. So I would love to continue leveraging what I have learned and my passion for making sure that we achieve continued growth and success in the district and continue to serve the community. So I hope to earn your vote and continue my work. To learn more about me or my campaign, you can visit leagardnerfor196.com, and feel free to get in touch that way as well.
Melissa?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters one last time for this opportunity. It's a great way for candidates to get their ideas and values out there to the public and door-knocking his heart, so I really appreciate the time. In closing, I'd like to make one thing very clear. I'm running for school board because there is no doubt in my mind that our children are the key to the success of our nation. While I'm not a teacher, I've had the opportunity to get a taste of what it's like to teach kids. I've worked with kids who are first-generation English speakers, kids whose parents have fled to the U.S. from war-torn countries, kids that have come from broken families, and kids who have come from families where everything is given to them that they've ever But when you put them all together in the same room and work toward a common goal, they do amazing things. I think we have a great district, but we're having a hard time getting out of a slump. Our MCAs and graduation record in the district support that. When we continue to do the same things over the expectation, with the expectation of a different outcome, it usually doesn't produce positively. With that, I'm asking everyone watching who will be voting on November 5th to consider maybe it's time 196 consider a different approach to getting that desired outcome, and vote for me, Melissa Field, as your next school board member. And I encourage everybody to take a look at my website, melissafieldfor196.com. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our candidate forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Dakota County, we extend our sincere gratitude to everyone who participated in tonight's forum. A special thank you goes to our candidates for their commitment to the democratic process and their willingness to serve our community. The League of Women Voters is dedicated to researching issues critical to our members and the well-being of our communities. If you're interested in learning more about our work and discovering how you can make a difference, please visit us at lwdakotacounty.org. For additional information about voting and candidates, please check out mnvotes.org or vote411.org. Thank you again for tuning in, and don't forget to vote by November 5th.